Yep.
I'm here. Great.
Good.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for attending our student achievement meeting for the month of April. We have three agenda items. One is to discuss our K through fifth grade ELA review. And our goal is information and then just a recommendation for first review for the whole board. District library plan, we'll talk a little bit about that. And some Arrowhead freshman data that we get yearly and just a couple of big ideas that we have off of those agenda items. Hoping to finish kind of a little early if we can, we'll see. So, um. I'm always optimist. Um, we can do it. All right. I feel like we talked quite a bit on the ELA, although we haven't looked at the report. We've been doing it monthly, almost monthly at 20 updates. So people understand how this new look at curriculum and integrating the science of reading is something that's required. And what does that look like? So this is a contemplation of work from the committee that actually started last summer. It's getting trickier and trickier to some old teachers. So actually, a couple of times to do some of our work, of evaluating our resources. We've had to cancel and reschedule and trying to work with our substitute situation to get it worked up. So a couple of things, the full report is there for your review and anybody's welcome to answer, ask any questions about that. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that are noteworthy on the report. Um, the first thing that I think is noteworthy is that I do want to just thank everyone personally who is on the committee. Because like I said, it's a lot of additional work when you're on committees. So thank you to our K through five staff. It was kind of fun because we have fifth grade, so we have some intermediate staff. And you know with primary a little more and both of our reading instructional specialists in there. But basically, the basic recommendation coming out of that report was to move ahead with our key resource of MyView. A couple of highlights that I just want to say about that recommendation. First, it's a 2025 copyright. So you might hear some other schools that have went through with MyView and some things about it. I just want to make clear that isn't the resource we have. So even for example, Richmond, who implemented MyView, one of our K eight feeder schools. We have a different version. And the biggest thing, looking at the two versions, is really the science of reading alignment. A lot of that, and sadly, it comes in a supplemental guide that we are going to be working back and forth. Because to be honest, there's a lot of things, both pros and cons and all resources that we looked at. And the 2020 at the right of MyView was kind of boring. Lot of skill and real finance things that we kind of grew up with. And in the 2025 version, a lot more of the science of reading, having a multi approach for students, more aligned toward giving them some other things. Is in the newer resources. Again, not as clean as I could like them. But also, it's some additional updates in workbook pages, but there are still things here that we're absolutely going to have to enhance. The beautiful part of that frankly is we have the partner resource up here with my perspectives, which is what we adopted last year for six eight. Same vendor, similar philosophies in a lot of ways. And really, in our curriculum writing process, Lauren and our six eighteen, Lauren's our instructional specials, really added the engagement in the pieces that are in there. And that's what we're also foreseeing with this adoption. The main difference really for us in selecting and recommending that had a lot to do with the fact that some other programs did not have high quality rigor within their inherent texts. That were within the program themselves. That is a very hard thing to live. Don't do any of that reading. Don't do any of the books. We wanted really to have a nice rigorous text set and selection. And that clearly came up in our review and evaluation process. So that's kind of a highlight for what our main recommendation is. And what kind of happens now is we spend time, our ELA committee's work is not done. They work with us over the summer at writing our units. How do we enhance it? And then they get stuck hanging with us all of next school year, doing the same thing for all units. There are five units in this resource, so we have dedicated time throughout all of next school year. To give time for the grade level teams to unpack those units together and do some work in preparation for teaching. We did have some community concerns that came to us if we remember back way back, kind of when we did it. And they sent them to me and they sent them to the board. And I did just kind of put a little presentation together just to answer them. And I welcome any community member that might have questions, even outside of that, to meet with me. But I think it's important for people to understand that if you have questions, we're happy to answer them. So these were the questions. There were five of them from our community members. And I'm going to answer each of them on some separate slides here. The first one, we actually got a lot more information on, which is what would teachers be told to do when a student comes to where they don't recognize? In addition to tell them to sum it up, they are not allowed to use three queuing methods. So that is a very good question. And so we did have information from the Department of Public Education instruction that kind of remind us what three queuing was. But it basically says we're prohibited from teaching from that. I think that's really important to say. Like as much as we want to say, like, we still value a strategy, it's a little harder when you're not allowed to do it. I did put in some more this week for the primary school, actually a graphic of what we're using from the science of reading to help transition people away from three queuing for our littles. But this prohibit prohibition only applies when the instructional goal is to solve for unknown words. And then I get underlined because I think it's really important. So if we have a kid to an unknown word, what they don't want us to do is cue them to look at the picture. Because later on in books, as texts get more complex, they're given the picture. So we want them to use their phonics knowledge and the phonemic awareness and learning to attack words. That's where we go first. And then we can kind of go through some of those other things. So the real hint here is what is the instructional goal that the teacher's wanting to do? And that determines if you can use parts of three queuing or not. The other thing is, is three queuing context clues is an evidence-based strategy. We have a lot of evidence that support that. And we are allowed to use it when the learning goal is related to vocabulary comprehension. So that's important to know. We're never going to just take away strategies. But as if anything, when we have an instructional goal, is what should determine what strategy we use with kids. So we're just going to be very well aware. We did spend some time with the primary staff a couple of Wednesdays ago, kind of beginning to unpack what this looks like. So hopefully, for our community members out there that had some additional questions on it, that kind of helped determine some clarifications of what we do. Some other questions that we're waiting to kind of like, what a poor text would be to answer? Which is how much time will be dedicated to practicing phonics drills versus discussions and analytics on text? This was tricky because there's not really any phonics drills, like in the traditional setting. We are doing phonics lessons, mostly in gradual release of responsibility method. Again, implementing some of our science of reading strategies. But if you're looking at sixty minute block of time, there's going to be time for read alouds built in there. Time for reading foundations, some phonemic awareness activities, vocabulary, and how does that attack our books? And how we do that and phonics built in sixty minutes. And then we still have enough primary schedule, I know because I'm busy working on it. Twenty to thirty minutes of small group, flexible time that's also going to be able to use for ELA math at thirty minutes a day. And they'll determine what are the needs of students for that in kind of what we're used to, got your reading instruction, small group, book loss. Our students are reading actual stories with rich language banners or simply created from reduced materials. Both of our resources we looked at, but especially MyView, like I said, that's what really structured us. The level rigger in those have authentic texts or anchor mentor texts. And actually, teachers do have some discretion with the read alouds and we'd be communicating that to families. There is some ways that you can use what comes, so you can also use a little bit more of your own. How many minutes is allotted for teacher reading? Again, our program, about ten to fifteen minutes. It's a little different every day in sixty minutes. It's not always equally divided by time. So somewhere in there, you can expect that amount of time. And well homework, waiting towards free reading or phonics worksheets. There are some phonics worksheets and some of whom we don't like. So I wouldn't be surprised as Mary Metz, our reading teacher, and I say, we cross out and say, we are not doing. Some of them are not high quality. Some come with decodable texts that are small that we cut out, that absolutely apply to the phonics lesson. So I'm not, again, there's no cut and dry answer, but you should not see phonics worksheets going home. Reading every night is still the best way to develop our little readers. And you know, I'm not saying if you're ill or on vacation, some stuff will come home. But really, we won't have heavy homework within the period. So those were just some things I wanted to address in the meeting and publicly for everyone. Is there any questions about the ELA review? Yes, so else?
Was that since probably not the only state that has changed their way of doing curriculum, correct?
Actually, many went before us. We're probably two to three years behind.
So is our expectation that curriculum materials like MyView in their next update will be shifting out some of the pieces that you're acting to substitute now?
Well, the MyView is the updated, the one that we've had.
You needed to bring in.
Yeah, because they get put in instead of the day-to-day manual, they just put in a separate manual.
I guess that's what I was wondering, they integrate that?
You know, this app, this happened very similarly Rebecca, too, when the Common Core first came out. They would do a Common Core aligned action, but it wasn't pretty because it's so much work on the vendor side. So they're filling in, yes, in two to three years, we might have more materials that are aligned.
And then as they update them, do we have to buy them again? Or is that?
Well, we can, we can do what we have. I mean, I will be able to make the modifications here and make sure that we're doing what we need to do. We'll think of a way of making it easier for teachers. I've already got a lot, lot of things going. But yeah, I think some have.
And do you think we, is it your way of sufficient development resources that you need for the primary school to do what?
Yeah.
The work you just talked about.
Well, I was hoping to link the implementation budget here and I couldn't because we're still waiting on some vendors. Honestly, they don't have all the pricing. So I'm hoping by May, I have that piece to come back. But I can tell you, we'll be investing in more decodable texts. There are other things, big books and things that we haven't put a lot of resources in recently. I'm going to kind of come back and put some of those in our kindergarten classrooms and first grade classrooms. And so I think, you know, we'll know more about what we have and how much money I might need more, or if I have an aside. But I didn't work with Dr. Russ at a pretty significant budget for this. I'm really hoping we should be all within it. If I base off of kind of my perspective, for five years, including the workbooks, replaced for five years, we ran about forty-five thousand. So you know, we have double the grade levels, so a hundred thousand plus supplemental things. Because they do have some like science of reading activities that we're going to be buying some kits and other things.
Very similar to our math adoption. Again, we'll, we'll work with Maria and the team and see what they want and see what we can put together. So the other pieces that are running together, professional development opportunities. And that continues to be, you know, worked out because we're still trying to hit some things. But you know, there's some things that Maria presented to us even today about opportunities. Because there's certain requirements of all of our staff that they have to be trained and started by.
You know, correct, twenty. So we're going to be trying to give time for new resource material implementation and then top of getting the required science of reading training. Which is about like letters training. Most of them are four or five days training. I found one for twenty-nine hours. So we'll be planning on.
The, was the update I saw today briefly, I presume, it tells me like our plans means it doesn't matter what's happening, whatever the state is fighting about, we have to get that forward. Is that accurate?
Right. We did not pick a state resource. So we're not paying attention too much. I don't want to say the noise of that. We picked the one that we felt was best for our community and our local adoption. And so I don't want to say we're not listening to it. It always kind of matters to know what's going on.
Listening, but it doesn't impact your timeline.
Right. Yeah. So some of the states that made some of the things, Florida is one actually, because they have a very high rated literacy center at the University of Florida. It's actually very good in intervention. It has been for well over a couple of decades. Those of us that know, they screen a lot of resources in their own merit and they also have their own interventions. We use some of them at the primary, MyView as well, within their approved work as well. So we did look at a couple of other states that we knew not just were anything, but who were deep in the science of reading. And what is their work in recommendations? Because they spent time, the university did.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Well, thank you. Thanks for keeping all this updated, you know, in the week through student achievement, board meetings, your weekly smore. Appreciate that.
I'm trying.
Can I get the primary weekly smore? I don't think it's the intermediate because it's a thing.
Yeah, we could.
Well, her weekly smore is different. Like my smore is like communities, but hers more is for staff.
Oh, I know.
Oh, and there's a student one too. Yeah, you're right. One of mine. I thought you called it something different.
The smore we were talking about. When I get a whole thing on neuro, neuro-on, this, no, plasticity, neuroplasticity. But I've been having a section in that Rebecca, like probably since February, where I'm developing frequently asked questions and just putting a couple in there a week. And then I have it on a document when it's all done, I'll just go onto a webpage and help them understand. Yeah. All right. So we have a district library plan. Oh, so new. And the memo kind of says, actually, we have a requirement to have a board approved a library plan. So that's what we're bringing to the board. We used to have a requirement for a separate board tech plan. And so what you're going to see is library and tech plan is kind of together. Most of the components that are in this plan are ones that we are directed to include in the plan. And so I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple of the main things in the plan. First of all, thanks to our library, unless Boy started it, Jim Nitti, for helping support it and us getting it together and done. I did put this introduction about what has to be in the plan. And key resources. And the biggest thing that I'm going to tell you for the key resources that I'm going to have up here, why I talked through it with the plan, is this wheel. We are required to use the future ready librarian framework. And so we have that graphic there because some people might think, why is this in a library plan, Maria? Library, I'm thinking books, I'm thinking magazines, boy's life, mirror, girl, whatever it is. Why are you talking about all of these things? So in this wheel, it has community partnership, budget resources, infrastructure, data privacy, time and space, curriculum assessment, personalized professional development. And sort of, I can't even read that. Maybe my glasses are worse than I thought, collaborative leadership. So we're required to look at each wheel of that and kind of give an update. And you'll notice in here, there's each got a category, what the definition is, and answer these reflection questions. And let her know if we have any artifacts for that. So the first part in library planning or the library plan is to reflect on our pod pieces, things that are good. So all of us on the team spent a lot of good time reflecting on the five. And then from that, deciding on what are some goals that we wanted to do. So I'm not going to go through because you see the goals, the action plan, the template. I'm going to just talk about a couple of key pieces that are, we started, because this is, although we're approving it now, we started some of this plan work already as we were writing it. Because we didn't wait and we're going to keep working. But we're having a data privacy, that's one of the wedges. Continue to do that. As more and more things come available to schools, making sure that they follow our policies. For FERPA and COBA are really important. So having Jim and I work within that is good. And so we do a lot of that together. Part of that is also sometimes being the bad guy, the no person, which no one wants to be, but that's Jim's job. Sometimes a teacher comes and he really, really, really want to come and lit and it doesn't pass our muster. And sometimes they'll say like, well, when I was in this school district, they did that. Okay, well, that's, that's school district's problem.
So it's a, it's an application or something that doesn't have sufficient privacy?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
And a lot of it is based on, you know, we'll look at our district policy as well as, you know, FERPA and COBA and SIPA and all those. And see if they have privacy statements that adhere to what we have and all these other organizations. And if they don't, then it's, you know, we've also done things one-off with certain individual students that need a resource, okay? Doesn't pass, but if it's a one-off thing, we'll get parent approval and that, you know, so it's, it's working with it. I try not to say no, try not to beat the bag out of the bat, but sometimes necessary when I can't prove that a student's identity isn't going to be released. So.
Yeah. So we've got policy work in there. We're working on a document where teachers can go and say, is that resource already pre-approved? So of course, anyone that we bring in for curriculum, like Zern for example, that we use for math, I'm preapproving and working with Jim on. But if there's other things that have come up, we're asking kids, we pre-approve. But as things, if teachers want them, we go through that process. So just listing, so as many teachers come on board here to say like, these are, you're okay, they're great, go, if you want to use them. And if not, this is our process. And continue to do a lot of professional learnings in the plan around these things. We do onboard our staff in the beginning of the year on some of these things, but it's just always ongoing, always an ongoing job. The other wedge that I think, you know, we have heavy in the plan is budgeted resources. You know, we do have a plan for the library budget and what we do with that, using common school funds. Which frankly is why we need the library plan to get common school funds. But also, what are we doing for technology, for software, for applications and apps? Or our budget, like the board approved last year for beginning one-to-one, starting here in fifth grade and going up with that. And getting rid of the BYOD, some of those things are built up into that plan. The last kind of area that I think our homework is really around is the curriculum assessment piece. Which of course is my warehouse that I get super excited about because I think technology is in service to what we want students and in service to what our teachers need. The biggest thing that the board's going to see in the next couple of months, really as part of Act 20 happen, is looking at a data warehouse. And where do we how was personalized reading plans, how we track that over time? I can tell you, being the administrator running our intervention and support meetings every week. Our staff spends a lot of time documenting data in very inefficient ways. And at some point in time, that means they're not working with kids. And I think we are at the point now where I've been working with Dr. Russ at planning for a data warehouse to come on board next year. Not doing full staff training on it yet, but for people that are kind of primarily responsible for Act 20, tracking data. And then in the coming years, kind of do more with staff. Because right now, staff at the beginning of the year have to go one place for their Ford scores, one place for their I-Ready scores. These are all different logins. We just want it that sings every night. And you can pop on a student in our secure system and have information at home. So that's a big part of the wedge that we will be working on in the next couple of years.
Are there multiple programs that do that? Or is there one primary?
There are multiple programs. So we're going to invest as soon as Maria gets a breather, that's pulling it next door. What's good is that I spend so much time in it and I know really what we're looking for. Not just my, like director's hat, who's been disconnected. I'm completely not disconnected. So I know I'll get a good product in there. And you know, there's a couple of favorites. EduClimers went off and used, but there's a new startup company, kind of like EduClimer. That tends to be a little cheaper that we might be able to align into from the same people that developed EduClimer. It was just bought by Star and Renaissance and then something comes in. So there's a lot of possibilities. And as we get there, again, that would be a very slow implementation. But I just, and much of that is spending money. Well, I'm self-saying. I would say that, like, that's not true.
People spend, that's not true. People spend this money, but they're not instructing our kids because they're.
If it's $10,000, for example, would you roughly be here? I can guarantee you between our interventionists and our specials, they are doing well more than $10,000 for some time. That can be used in a better way.
And you're also lowering the frustration level.
Oh, yes, I am. I will tell you from Lori's side, and I'm not talking out of turn. Even when we look for students for special education referrals, having all the data and information in one spot will be life-changing for her. Because she has to go through the same thing and same with our special education staff.
Yes.
I mean, Lori, a very captain person, when I said, we got to go ahead, our budget goes. So know that that's like the main piece.
Common school funds, just so you know, from a budgetary standpoint, this past year, we received about fifty-two, fifty-three thousand dollars. As a, as a grant, you know, that has to be devoted specifically for certain things. EduClimer would not be an eligible expense out of that. So there are some things that we would have to move forward that. The nice part about common school funds is if you don't use it, it can roll into a restricted fund balance for the following year. So not that we need to waste it on anything, but we have to use those dollars specifically for what those requirements are.
Any other questions on the board library plan?
When does this get approved? Is it, are we approving tonight?
No, you want this?
This would be a recommendation that you would be comfortable to take it to the board for may approval. We do have to upload our approved plan into software so they understand we're doing what we need to do to actually get our next grant.
And when is the deadline for that? So if we approve in May, that means?
Yeah, yes.
Yep, yep.
If for any reason it were not to be approved, you may well.
We probably have to apply for an extension. We've spent significant time on this, Maria, Jim.
Yeah.
Putting them together.
I see no reason.
No, and it needs all the requirements. There's a timeline, there's an action plan, it needs all the requirements of the DPI proposal.
Maria never does anything, those are all the requirements.
Having seen other districts' plans, this is a very, very good plan. Excepted for Maria.
Thank you, Maria.
It wasn't. It was a team effort. Trust me. Team effort. Team effort. We bonded. But honestly, the timeline got tough. I had a lot on my plate. I just had to prioritize what I got done. So I used some spring break because I had me with a couple of people because that's not all something I know about. So again, team effort. All right. So I'm just going to quickly report Arrowhead's data. As you know, Arrowhead shares first semester data with their feeder schools. I however, do not have permission to share other feeder schools' data. So what I can share is what I have on here. So we're going to kind of review some things. And then I kind of can tell you a little bit about how I use it and how it may be meaningful or not meaningful to me. how it may be meaningful or not meaningful to me, um, off of what they shared.
Do we ever do comparative between feeder schools?
They do, I do data. I'm just because of privacy, we don't open the other schools' data. So I can't share that with the board, I can't share Richmond's or Lake Country's data. We can look at them, but they aren't open.
Can you make up what your command is?
Shut it off, my. So, what you're gonna notice is basically, um, grades for the course, English, and then paths under here, science, math, and social studies. And what I put on, what I was able to share with you is that matter.
Yes.
Um, is what our, um, local Merton data is and then all of the Arrowheads. What you're gonna notice on here is anything starred, Arrowhead asks, um, that we, um, to possibly exposing, I definitely have kids in a few of our classes, we ask for, can we find an other? So no, you know, some of that you can kind of figure out, but you know, where we sit with numbers. So really some things, um, there's two opportunities for English at Arrowhead, English, the English nine course or the English honors course. What you're gonna notice is that our students that take English honors are doing fairly well. Um, they are getting, a chunk of them getting As or looking at Es and Cs. We don't have a Ds and Fs, and that's a very good sign, um, for our preparation. Again, these are self-selected though, and what I mean with that is families self-select what classes they take at Arrowhead. So I always say that because sometimes it might be not a recommendation that you see on some of these and families still enrolled. Um, what I would tell you is that all feeders have students in the D and F categories, um, when we're looking at, um, English nine. And so in Arrowhead's goal work, um, they have identified as literacy as a, a major issue. Um, so their goal work is, um, make changes to English nine, ten, and introduction and English eleven. And they're focusing on vocabulary instruction, grammar, and reading comprehension in their new courses. They did some reworking of their spoken sequence and, um, that's some of the work that they're heavy into. Um, since I've been here, some of these things are feedback that we keep getting, which we did take when we looked at our six, eight review. Um, because we probably were not teaching the grammar and the rigor and the standards are pretty high, no grammar, and then intermediate, um, to what kids should know and be able to do. So those are some things that I think in vocabulary that we continue to work on to increase our scores here, that I think will also benefit Arrowhead as, as they transition.
Well, they give you the, that data, did they give you any qualitative feedback about, we're noticing that of these things, we'd love to see Merton kids?
Yeah, since I've been here, we've met with the English department at Arrowhead, I've met with a year twice, with their English nine teachers to kind of talk about where they see that. Um, and some of that's in the report when we did the six, eight report, but yes, um, and it, it impacted why we look at some, some programs. So science, um, you have, um, you have, uh, two options, a science nine and a signers nine honor black. You might see the students are the same, that's because it's in the black schedule, it's reported twice, um, by first quarter and second quarter, so just know, like, most of the time you'll see the same thing unless the student drops it, which in most cases, it's too late in Arrowhead to drop. So unless something is very different, um, but again, I think it's very telling when we look at Merton, that we're sending our kids prepared for science nine. Um, that is also the most feedback I get from our parents and students, is how easy science nine is.
Apparently.
And, um, it's not rigorous. And some notes that I would just say, and I mean, I think that's because, you know, day wagers classes are steam-based, we do a lot in sciences here, um, just from both our project lead, the wave programming and our science classes, so they lead with a very deep rich understanding. I would hope that they're doing well, um, and, um, the other thing that I would just note about science, there are my little text boxes in the corner, is that, um, true for all schools, they're great grades for any student also taking the honors class. Which I would also wish that these should tell a story to Arrowhead, like you could put more rigor, um, our kids are ready. And, um, they do have a name change, they're going away from honors. What do they call it? I think it's in Richmond or something. And what's funny is they communicated the changes, but they're not changing the curriculum, so. And they were pretty upfront about that, so, um, I'll just leave that where it is. I was at my old high school, I would be wanting a little bit more from the heads.
And the kids were in the classes.
Yeah, um, so here's our Merton data, and I drew it up, so I'm gonna show this for my, and then I'll cruise down to the Arrowheads. Um, these are all again, if they're black course, you see them double.
So Arab and Geography, nobody got below a C or nobody got below a B?
That is correct. Um, so. This is data that is similar to past years. We're hoping to see better grades in our algebra students and less repeating of algebra with their new curriculum review. But I will tell you this, we still have kids in our traditional Algebra A, Algebra B, Division seven, eight, that are filtering in these eighth graders, we're still the same thing, so we're not gonna see that for year two. Um, but that's kind of our hope, um, you know, like, it gives you an idea of where we're kind of sitting, um. You know, one of those, we have kids in almost every one of those classes up there coming out of. So, um, lots of, um, possibilities for students, um. Oh, I didn't, I don't know, I forgot to ask for some of them here, I'll go back and do that. Um, social studies, um. Again, there's two classes, an options for social study, there used to be an enriched, a Richmond class that was like ELA and social studies combined, this is the first year that they no longer did that. So what you see is social studies nine and AP human geography. Again, students self-select those classes, where our kids, our kids are doing extremely well in social studies, um, up at Arrowhead. And when I look at Arrowhead's scores here, um, you know, all students who are kind of going into AP human geography, you'll notice are hitting Is and Bs. Um, what I'd be most interested score that I'll probably circle back with is actually, out of those kids that are taking AP, what's their passing rate? Cause grades are one thing, I wanna know passing rate and that would talk to me more about preparation.
They told us, they told AP students, they called, that the pass rate last year was less than fifty percent.
Okay.
There's also somebody different teaching at this.
Okay.
So, I, I don't know if it was to encourage them to study, it, uh.
So, you know, question I would be having, right, like, if you're getting As and Bs, one might think you should be on track for the exam. In a lot of ways, though, kids aren't ready for a college level type of exam for memorizing content. So there's a big thing into this class, although it's a fairly, a class that is a lot of freshman, um, schools available to freshmen, um, that would take. So.
Right, I haven't said that, it's also, that's his favorite class. She likes.
Um, we don't like get to change any of this, this is a PDF from Arrowhead, um, and it just kind of talks a little bit about, this is the pre-ACT score that ninth graders, um, took last spring.
Is it possible to make it here? I'm sorry.
Yes, I can, oh, wait, maybe.
Yep, three dots, stop break, and then zero it.
Oh, yeah, my favorite place, and then it says, okay, there we go.
They can't help it, that's.
So this is kind of where we kind of look at who are being the pre, you know, the pre-ACT benchmarks, basically. Um, what I find fascinating about this is like, uh, our, our Merton kids are always doing really well up to the other feeder schools, up in the top in the lot of situations. Um, you know, that English score where we're getting feedback, you know, okay, so Richmond and Swallow are doing just a tad bit better with that, but not overly, um, you know, in high levels compared to what we're seeing to some of our other feeders. I was looking at some maybe. Um, you know, our math, again, um, you know, a little bit over than I would wanna see in some things, but outside of, um, Northlake, like, we're well kind of in a terrible side. And most of these cases were in the top three, which is where I like to be. Um, you know, our reading scores are much better than some of them. And then, um, we have science, and then STEM score is the combination of math and science. So, um, and then obviously we have the timer, so my benchmark, not benchmark. What did they report each year? Um, at the March Arrow, uh, superintendent's meeting.
Yeah, but they take that assessment in.
Spring.
Probably they do in that one.
This is for, yeah, this is the state grade.
The state's grades.
Okay. So we're getting, that, that's where it said the graduating class on top, they're like a year behind. So, yes, they're laying a year behind. Um, and they don't do more than that freshman year, they don't, they send the data by a few after that first year. Um, cause what is the feeder really influencing at that point in time, and they're probably more representative to their programming. Um, yeah, so that's kind of just a rough overview of our data. Thank you, sorry. My apologies. Um, so again, based off of what we get, we just kind of take a look at it and see, is there anything that's very alarming to me, or are we in, in the ballpark or rather than the feeders, which is what else, my goals.
Where do you think, based on those scores, we need the most work?
They can, I think, you know, what's not surprising to me is a bit on the math side and a bit on the reading English side. And I think, you know, we've done some programmatic changes that we should see that. You know, my biggest thing is the grades aren't reflected to where kids are progressing, and that's showing me more or less a couple things, because I would say that's kind of how our data is a little representative here too. Sometimes our grades, we call that grade inflation, right, like where your grades are showing one thing and when you're getting in a standardized test, you're seeing something different, and that's just always really hard, um, you know, and I know we're looking to do some common grading and reporting work here, and obviously this kind of shows me when this data is together, Arrowhead has a need for doing some grading and reporting.
Our conversation with the superintendent level, what came to the high school level is this, some of those pre-ACT data that you just saw is not representative of what our eighth grade state forward assessments are. So, um, we teach the state standards, and so we're kind of continuing to, to press that a little bit when they say what's going on. You know, they may say, boy, what, you know, to your point, what's happening at Burton? We then say, well, we had them at seventy-eight percent proficiency and now they're at sixty-two percent proficiency. I don't know what to tell you, right, because they've been there for a semester or stuff like that. So we continue to work with them, again, Maria, we continue to push, I know Arrowhead's doing some things too as well.
Some goal work, they're seeing it too.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, just working with the superintendent, asking some of those critical conversations about like, we can't say they're not coming prepared, we have different data measures, so. You know, like I said, the fact that there are that many As and Bs in some of these things will tell me the rigor's probably lacking. Not that we want kids to not do grades, but I don't know, we're not, we all have had children there. They're not busy doing homework in those classes, some of them. AP human geography has a lot of homework, but in most of those classes, not in nature. All right, well, thank you for everybody for your time today. Um, and we will see you in May.
I'm sorry, it's the, the, we're gonna follow meeting to order and we'll do the by the least. In this meeting, it's been posted all in our post place. Next is the group of the event.
Second.
In motion, second during discussion. And all favoritism.
This evening, our student showcase is, as you can hear, right over here, we're gonna be focusing on our program. So, field trip, we're all gonna get up and we're gonna head over to here. Keep an eye on D, I did highlight it that we did create one agenda that includes the community forum into the board agenda. Um, hopefully what that means is, is nothing's changed from the format of the community forum. Again, this is the opportunity for our, uh, staff, community, families to discuss any topic that they would like to. It does not have to be on the agenda, it is a dialogue with the whole. The difference now that it's in the formal meeting part, is that this, you're, if you do present, it will be part of the minutes, just like it was in delegations to be heard. So there will be an official record of it within the minutes. Obviously, all of our community forums have always been recorded, but the difference now that it's within the meeting, again, we just wanted to keep it clean, start the meeting, we have a community forum and then we go into the rest of it. Um, that you would be, if you do speak, your name wouldn't be reflected in the minutes. Uh, basically the topic in a brief summary of what it is that you spoke to the board about. So, so at this time, um, we will open it up to, uh, our community forum. Again, this is the times to discuss anything you would like with the board. During delegations to be heard, it has to be a topic on the agenda. So that's the difference. Looks like no one has. Has to talk in the hearing forum.
Hey, we're gonna move on to the, um, world reorganization. And first item is election. We retire with the president's award, nominations.
I'd like to be the president.
How would you like to proceed?
Did we talk about why we'd like to? Hold position, or is that not something?
I would like to, uh, share with the first.
All right, um, you're interested in being president now, for this last year, I liked how we worked together as a board and maybe has appreciated now that it's been, having had that experience, I'm interested in being part of continuing that, and I'll be president next.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I will also be president, so I'm gonna bring, uh, for leadership to the board. So I'm comfortable with, uh, voice vote.
Okay, we are going to continue with, uh, if there's a name or. The guys. Uh, they were better about science, we're doing the chair, say it only.
I'm in.
Okay, uh, your, your camp.
Hi.
I will turn over the. Over here.
All right, so I can continue the word.
Yep.
We are really, okay, um, thank you, Dean, appreciate it. Um, so now we're on to, uh, vice president. Okay, so, giving for nominations for the vice president. Nominate, we're back on it. Okay. I'm nominated, so. Right. Would you like a ballot or would you like to voice votes? Would you like a ballot, or would you like to voice votes?
One or a couple, I mean.
Okay, we'll go with first nomination, all the host favorite board member, I'm just calling vice president.
Aye.
Okay, all is in favor of board member Anderson, we call him vice president.
Aye.
Hi. Okay, board member Anderson is now vice president, moving on to treasurer. Nominations for the position treasurer.
I nominate Rebecca Irons for position treasurer. I accept.
All those in favor.
I would, I.
Trevor, um, clerk. All those in favor of board member Cotton, or clerk.
Aye.
Next, please, the election of office. All right, moving on to, uh, committee assignments. Sure, yeah, sure, so our first one, we'll, this is your work down, we'll do that before, so negotiations, negotiations. Uh, occurs truly once a year, and that is with our, uh, teacher team, so that can be right around that February. Last year, we have, uh, you know, they. All right, speaking for the now different negotiations. Uh, I would also like to be part of negotiations, it's made, so I'm nominated myself. Any other? We could need two per each minute, so that would be perfect. I, we can go on, we're, yeah, we should, no, all right, okay. So, uh, board number Baberton and myself, for negotiations, all is in favor.
Aye.
So, this is complete, next is personnel policy, yeah, that's a. I think you've been the goal for the last two years over there, a lot of heavy lifting there, um, in the tool.
I accept.
That was that.
I'm also interested in serving now.
Okay, so that can be met twelve times, approximately, even twelve times, yeah, uh, can I do that correctly? Okay, uh. I would like to nominate, uh, William Anderson for the policy committee. Anybody else interested in the policy? Oh, yeah, the numbers. If you're related to the position policy, is that correct?
Yes.
Now we require a vote. We, first person nominated, we have to do, you can only vote for two. If you wanna do voice votes, right? I think it was halfway, correct, we have to vote for two, because we can see where we get from there. Last time, you started with the first nomination, let's start with the vote. Okay, so all those in favor of board member Cotton for policy, say aye.
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 You, all right, then the next one was Rebecca. The sentence, all right, all those in favor, um, board member Irons for policy. Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then, uh, all those in favor of board member Anderson for policy. Aye, aye. So I have it as board member Cotton and Anderson, uh, well, a solid. Right? Okay, there'll be findings, probably meets maybe four to six times a year, quarterly, every month. Um, and then more heavy has the budget development, you can use. So I'll say seven times, I'd say, and it's down to five, five meetings last year. Five meetings last year? All right. Five meetings, okay. We'll keep five. Quarterly plus six, quarterly plus one. Positions, anyone else interested in my name, I'll vote you inside, it's like, it's getting the. Correct, I didn't hear it. Nominations for the finance committee.
I would nominate, I was just as the treasurer, I think it would make sense for you. Okay, you have a, you're sorry. He's sorry, the student achievement.
Okay, so we have, uh, board member Doberton and myself nominated for, uh, finance. Favor.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is facility. Had it down to me one time last year. I'll probably already for.
Okay, all right.
Bye. I nominate, I was looking for.
It's asked.
Any other members interested in?
I would like to be on, so.
Okay. We have board member Doberton, board member Cotton, any other interested? Parties.
I'm interested in.
I have William Anderson, William Cotton, board member Doberton, interested in, uh, facility committee. The same process, we'll start with board member.
I would. The inventory. I'll decline.
Okay, board member Cotton's declined. Any other interested parties? Okay, all those in favor of board member Doberton and board member Anderson for facilities, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, student achievement. I nominate board member Fine to have. Accept.
That's one.
Any other parties interested with student achievement? Okay, all those in favor of board member Irons, board member Kent, student achievement, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, next is strategic planning, so that has met. Justin.
A lot.
Yeah, I didn't know that, that'd be, so I didn't activate that. That was board form committee back in March or February, so especially this. Well, two times month. Right now, I do believe we have two more meetings planned in May.
Oh, yes, nominate aye.
I accept.
And nominated. Board member Cotton, since you were on, both of you are on Friday, have a good day.
I accept.
You're welcome. Okay, uh.
Mary, when was that wrap up?
Should have had your first wrap, too much more than kid you, so we have two more meetings, May seventh and May twenty-first, all right, thank you. So all those in favor of board member Irons and board member Cotton for the strategic planning committee, that is, plan. In the middle of summer, right?
Right.
All the time, favor. I'm not sure if there's way to be, you know, there'd be some other things throughout here, but, all right, all those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we got CISA one, yep, now that's our committee structure, and, uh, the board's asked to create a representative for CISA one. As well as WASB, so we'll start with CISA, before we move on to that, it's a bit time to discuss. Community and poll. Or you have a way of.
Yes. I don't do it, yeah.
I would bring that through as policy, please, so I'm.
Catch your meetings and agenda items, let's go ahead and back, and that's where we.
Notice, thank you. All right, all right, so now we're moving on to, uh, item C, CISA. Don't want to wrap one, what is that? It means there's many times if you would like to, uh, there is a delegation that I do believe could possibly be both monthly or quarterly. How many times have you been invited?
A lot.
A lot, so again, that's one of those where a member could get a stat in, depending which, okay? All right, um.
I think. She kicked it out to me. I went, which year is the.
Oh, that's, oh, exactly.
And how many times did you meet?
I didn't.
How many times were you invited?
I got all of you. I don't know how big, you know.
It's a lot.
Being more present and.
Sure.
All right, so, um. Nomination for CISA one, wrap. I'll nominate board member Anderson. Any other interested parties? Okay, all those in favor of board member Anderson, say aye, aye. Okay, and the last one is WASB. Okay, free agents, you'd like.
Unless somebody else is.
What is, what is that on?
Wisconsin Association.
What is, what is on the table, what do you, what do you, what do you have to do?
Similar to CISA, they're invited to a lot of, have a say to.
Okay, okay, very good, very good, any other nominations? Um, well, clear the now, I nominate for the Brian's. Yeah, any nominations to that position? All of the favor of board member Irons for the, uh, WSB rep, say aye.
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 Okay, uh, board reorganization is complete, it's a way. All right, listen, yeah, thank you.
And will be approved the minutes from, um, March eighteen, September.
Second.
Okay, we're the more than a second to approve the minutes from March eighteen, twenty twenty-four, open session, all those in favor. Right, aye?
Aye.
Moving on to the approval of the financial reports, name and bill listing.
And who's the, the bachelor listing from March eleventh, twenty twenty-four, March, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and we're community school this round. Payroll direct deposit nine zero 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 six one nine five five three nine zero 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 six two zero seven seven, the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Direct deposit number nine zero zero zero. Nine zero 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 six two zero seven eight, nine zero 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 six two one nine sixteen, amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand six hundred three dollars and fifty-three cents. Direct deposit number nine zero zero zero, six two one nine seven three nine zero 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 six two three two zero, nine hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. Wire transfers, wire number two zero two three zero zero two one nine, zero three zero zero two four four, amount of three hundred twenty thousand four hundred nine dollars and forty-four cents. Wire number two zero two three zero zero two three eight, three two zero two three zero zero two three eight, amount of one hundred. One hundred one thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents, for a total payroll of nine hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred nine five dollars and ninety-three cents. Accounts payable, check number five six three nine five six five six four five five, amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and eighty cents. Eighty wire transfer, two zero two three zero zero two two, and two zero two three zero two four seven, amount of eight thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Credit card transaction two two zero two four, and two two zero two four, amount of twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine, and ninety-sixty-two cents. Credit card transactions three two zero two four, and three two zero two four, amount of seventeen thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. AC direct deposit number T P two four zero 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 seven seven, three two four zero 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 eight five, and that one thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents, for a total of those payable. Of two hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred three dollars and sixty cents, and full interest expense of one hundred and two hundred sixty-two thousand six hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-three cents.
Okay, more than second, all those in favor, moving. Financial report bill listing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric, all right, we're moving on to delegateings to be heard.
Oh, what exactly?
Okay, so on the board package, we have, um. One person instead of like to speak, anyone sign up? On here, I can, I cannot, I cannot see that as well, uh, so we have Ashley Lent, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I spoke to the board on April twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three, which is now a year ago, after the last board reorganization. And I'm gonna speak to you today with the same message for consistency. I'm gonna ground everyone and bring everyone back just like we're here. Today marks the first official board of education meeting since the recent elections were held for two contested seats on our school board. The voters have spoken, and again, I look at this as an opportunity to put the turmoil of the elections and polarizing topics go up on social media behind us. To continue to work on the healing and growth within our school and community. I believe there's been a marked improvement in the community overall, and a reduction in divisiveness since I last delivered this message. And I hope to see that try to continue over the course of the next year with the new composition of schoolwork. I'm speaking this evening to have a meeting of the minds, and to remind all five of you, why you all should be filling the seats on the school board. Something that should be shared among all of you, even if you can agree on nothing else, and those reasons why should always be about the children, their education, and the school community itself. To reach that central role, we're gonna ask everyone to put their pitchforks down, to stop any involvement that you may directly have in dividing the community. To stop inviting and engaging with individuals who primary goal is to inflame, start outrage in our community. That we all refocus on the task at hand, which is fulfilling the needs of our school. I'm gonna ask that you take a pause before fulfilling your critical tasks as a school board member. And consider a voice from above questioning, just because I can doesn't mean I should. As you make decisions for our schools, and you interact with our community in person and on social media. Ask yourself if your subsequent decisions are expendable, and just because you can do something, does that mean you shouldn't be doing it? Moving forward, I hope we look at the next twelve months and beyond as the next chapter for Merton. With that in mind, I'm gonna remind you of one of the, only one of many policies that were adopted through the voluminous policy work that's been occurring over at least the last thirteen months. So I'm gonna read policy one sixty-five again to this new board, which was adopted on March twentieth of twenty twenty-three and carried unanimously by a vote of five to zero. For those in the room, policy one sixty-five is the Merton Community School District Policy regarding Board Member Conduct and Code of Ethics. This is the core of what I'm going to recite to you tonight. I'm gonna read it verbatim because it stands on its own, but I really hope that once you hear it out loud, some of you again. That it speaks to each and every one of you, and that you uphold it. It's divided into five sections, duties as a member of the board, performing the functions of a board member, maintaining desirable relations with other members of the board. Meeting responsibilities to the community and working with the superintendent's staff, so, re-ese. As a member of the board, I will listen. I will uphold the laws of the United States, the state of Wisconsin, and the local jurisdiction. I will be motivated by a desire to serve the citizens and children of my community. I will inform myself of the proper duty and functions of a school board member. I will recognize the fact that it is my responsibility, together with that of my fellow board members, to see that the districts and schools are properly run and not to run them myself. I will work through the administrative employees of the board, not over or around them. I will recognize the integrity of my predecessors and associates in the merit of their work. I will recognize the fact that district business may be, may be deeply transacted only in a board meeting, which complies with whip stats nineteen till eight five. And perform the proper functions of a board member. I will work to develop sound educational policies, which promote the efficient and effective operation of the district. In meeting my legal responsibility, I will function as part of a corporate entity governing public education in the district, and not as a district administrator. I will consider myself a legal trustee of public education in the district, and will do my best to protect and preserve it, and to advance its progress. Three, in maintaining desired implications with other members of the board, I will respect the right of others to have and express opinions. I will recognize the fact that authority rests with the board in legal session and not with individual members of the board, except as authorized by law. I will make no disparaging remarks in or out of board meetings about other members of the board or of their opinions. I will recognize the fact that to promise in advance of any meeting how I will vote on any proposition which is to be considered. Is to close my mind and agree not to think through other facts and points of view which may be presented. I will make decisions in board meetings only after all sides of debatable questions have been presented. I encourage all members of the board to participate fully in board decision. I recognize that standing and special convenies of the board be appointed to serve only in investigative and advisory capacity. I will consider it generally appropriate practice to hold sessions of the board with superintendent present, except for board self-evaluation session. And when discussing the performance contract and financial remuneration of the superintendent. Confidential business of the board shall be discussed only on legally closed session of the board. In meeting my responsibilities to the community, I will attempt to appraise fairly the present and future educational needs of the community. I will attempt to obtain adequate financial support for the district and schools. I will be available and accessible to the citizens when so requested. I will interpret the needs and attitudes of the community and do my best to translate them into the educational programs of schools. I will assist the business transaction, transactions of the district be on legal, ethical, open, and above board basis. I will not buy the personal use at school price. I will not buy the personal use at school price. Five, in working with the superintendents and staff, I will hold the superintendent responsible for the administration of the district and schools. I will give the superintendent authority to measure with the responsibility of the office. I expect that the district and school will be administered by the best professional people available. I will participate in award action once the superintendent has presented adequate information and recommendations. I will participate. I will expect the superintendent to keep the board adequately informed at all times through both oral and written reports. I will give the superintendent friendly counsel and advice. I will refer all complaints to the proper administrative office, officer, or suggest that a complaint present their case in writing to the board as a whole. I will present any personal criticisms of employees to the superintendent. And I will join other board members to provide adequate safeguards for the superintendents and other employees so they may perform their proper functions on a professional basis. So that is policy one sixty five on its own, the next part is not. In conclusion, I ask that you meet the ethical standards I just read to you and remember to fulfill a vital invisible role within the community. Holding a position as an elected official is not something you should take lightly. Even without this specific policy that as a board member you have to uphold. We are five of you that had handing grading and approval, so you should be representatives of our community that wants to act in integrity. Teach our children that being an elected official and serving the community on our school board is something to be proud of. Bring their lessons studying about the branches and operations of government to life for them in your new roles. Give them behavior to model that is respectable so that when they see you in public, they hear you speak, they read what you write, and are personally subjected to your decisions. That I and other parents don't have to be in riddles trying to explain these services at our dinner tables. Let's get back to that small town that is moving in growth because we are a place that people change their lives for. Use this next twelve months to follow our district's vision statement and work together as a board to maintain our significantly increased expectations rating by being creative. Collaborating with each other, communicating and solve problems with critical thinking that is responsive to student, teacher, and community needs. Start fresh from this point forward, grow in this next chapter, live the values of this district, and be exceptional.
Alright, move on to the district commissioners' work. So we have one donation um, for, we like, interview one one for a bunch of basketball that were given to a primary school and intermediate schools, which is looking for a donation. Are we voting to accept the donation? Have presented.
Second.
Alright, the motion second, new session. My manager, you're going on, the relation.
Thirty twenty one is a uh. Let's see, it's an organization to support um, special needs adult, adults. And uh, we have a couple former staff members who worked there, who currently work there, Lenny Monson and Craig Prince, I believe. And they must have had some extra things and maybe there was a, some sort of connection to say, hey, your own school could use them and they, they just showed up on page so.
Alright, the motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we're on to the personnel action.
Yep, so um, again, he did uh, update the board packet. This morning with some new ones, but uh, and those should be in front of you too as well. So um, we do have three letters of resignation, one was from Sammy Hoffman, a science teacher, and she's been with us for one year, thanks Sammy. Uh, we have one from Joanne Povish, uh, Joanne has been with us for the past twelve years in both at all capacities. So it's a new teaching interventionist, teacher, full time, part time, so again, thank you very, very much for, for Joanne. And then our last uh, resignation or retired letter from uh, Sarah Casper. So Sarah is retiring from education and she's been with the district the last twenty six years. So um, yeah, Sarah's been fantastic educator. Maybe all of us have had their, almost their children go through with, through Sarah too, so um, yes, it's a little like the thing. Those three individuals for their service, particularly Joanne and Sarah, who are retired there too, so. And then you'll also see two individual teacher contracts, we will see one for Kayla Spencer. Uh, again, Kayla will be to replace Sarah as best as we possibly can, and she reminded me that we can. And then all of Sarah's words, of course. Um, and then we also have Lisa Carroll, who is going to be uh, joining our second grade team. So you'll see two individual teaching contracts um, there as well, so. And then also we have two letters of appointment for instructional specialists, Mary Alonsky for different and talented mentor coordinator for all the talent acquisition. Uh, generally focusing on uh, their induction program for our Merton educators and that will create to continue their journey and their professional development in their mentor capacity. And then obviously focusing on they get their talented side too, so um, Mary, you're in both of those roles. Um, with the addition of maker space, point a hundred percent, we had to pull um, those roles out of that hundred percent contract. And I think it stand well, it doesn't that increase there too as well. And finally, you'll see Andrea Irvine, uh, intermediate school math specialist, uh, and it would be replacing, without a middle school math specialist, so again, thank you to Maria and Lindsay B for filling in for that role. And we've been bringing that, that for each year two, for the beginning of the school then, which not two, so. So those are the personnel actions, and then you can handle them, uh, and remove all letters of resignation, uh, the individual teaching contract, a little better to be pointed for them, and take them individually.
And we'll be approved of the master pending.
Okay, um, all those in favor of these personnel actions?
Clarification, this is resignation and letters and points and contract, all in one.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor of um, moving all reservations, uh, teaching contracts and letters of appointment? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very much. Same agenda.
Fifty years. Was this a five year walk?
Five, yeah, five, sorry. Yeah, very much. And then, Ron, any information?
Sure, information, but just wanted to give a uh, open records request, you know, can do that monthly, um, we did have one open records request that took. Uh, a little bit, a lot of time, uh, probably about eight, nine hours of administrative time, and then probably, again, I haven't seen the legal bill. Probably two and three hours of legal. So, uh, and then we had some little ones, again, this, you know, what's this information, what's that information? So.
Hold the spot. Yeah. Be a lot less.
Correct, yeah, so, and then obviously.
So the new request was just a.
This was a prior request between March and, and that request had been built between the last board meeting and this has been quite a long time, so, yeah. So, um, that's all I have for information, we're winding down the school year. Again, there, so. Uh, and committee reports.
A discussion on that. Brought up. Alright, let's move to committee reports. Alright, policy and personnel, uh, again, this was a, another big review of the five hundred, we did start our five hundred series, which is personnel. Uh, you'll see all of them, again, thank you to Nicole, and also thank you to Andrew, who did the first read in the board. So, uh, again, we will be discussing these as a board, uh, in new business where people can, uh, you know, talk about any policy that we want to talk about. So, um, all these didn't make it through that committee, um, we did. We see it. Okay, finance?
Finance.
So, we'll leave it all out, so finance committee, we did a quarterly update, um, for revenues and expenditures, seems they're looking very good on the revenue expenditure side. Um, we anticipate approximately eighty seventy five thousand, at the end of the year, we'll be able to more quarter to go. Uh, approximately seventy five thousand dollars worth of additional revenue that wasn't expected. And uh, then another uh, probably a save hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars of less expenditures, so. Which is always good, so we're looking at right around that three hundred thousand dollars when you take a look at additional revenue, less expenditures. So again, you'll get that final quarterly statement, and ultimately, once the quarter's done, we will be starting our audit. So, uh, we'll have a preliminary audit at the end of June, and then we do already have our final audit set for the end of July, so. So that's three of the, the quarterly updates. Now, you also will see, um, again, in May, uh, every year, the administration brings a preliminary budget. For the board to consider and ultimately to make a motion in the second to approve, uh, to begin spending district dollars July first. Okay, our fiscal year runs July first through June thirtieth. Um, as you will see in the presentation, um, we don't know any solid final variables until our third Friday count in September. Um, the equalization aid, how much state aid we're getting, as well as in what our property values. Those three things critically come together to really create group case for what? So, um, so you will see a uh, a draft, and again, I wanted to present this to the finance committee. Uh, again, we'll take any feedback or anything ahead of that, but this will then be presented to the full board in May, on the May twentieth board meeting, or then. Uh, basically approval, knowing that everything's in chief. When we start to, to look at that too as well. Um, I will highlight, uh, again, it's just so everybody's clear, again, we will, we, I'll be having a community conversation, again, I'll push out the municipalities surrounding uh, state aid and our tax levy. So, um, we are working to see survive and making sure, and I wrote some numbers, a confirmant, just to make sure that we know uh, exactly what might be possible. Again, when you take a look at our school district, we are increasing enrollment, which means the revenue limit obviously can go up from that standpoint. The state has given the authority to school board to levy three hundred twenty five dollars per student. Uh, as per this reading for your roll in the average, and that three hundred twenty five dollars comes with no state aid. There is no state aid to offset that, so just like a year ago, when a thousand dollars went on to the per people spending, that was all pushed on to taxpayers compared to in years past. Other by ideal budgets, it was a shared, if not the state picked up all of it as property nets relief, so. So we can take a look at the additional three twenty five, take a look at the additional enrollment. The other piece you have to look at is, is the increased property value in the district. Everybody, we're not, not surprised that the property value going up, and then the state of Wisconsin takes a look at that and says, you are more property rich as a community, you will pay more of the bill. Hence the reason why the tax levy goes up. We are, a year ago, the tax levy was raised about thirty percent. And we, and everybody probably in the room might have heard about that a little bit somewhere out in social. Um, and again, the anticipated raise to the levy is approximately fifteen percent with the variables that we have now, the conservative variance with the, you know, whenever I, a ten percent increase to property value. A very safe and conservative uh, increase to students. Uh, and then I also did anticipate a hundred twenty two thousand dollars worth of less state aid. Uh, there's conversation about the voucher, uh, it's going up too, which goes down to the tax levy, a lot of different factors. So, wanted to present this to the board, uh, obviously just to kind of get your heads wrapped around it, we can continue to have some conversation. But then ultimately wanted to present this to our community and push that out too, so people know when they're gonna get that tax bill, at least they can have a, a little bit of an opportunity there too, so. Um, as a board, ultimately, when the board, I get questioned, well, how do we lower the tax levy? We lower the tax levy by not uh, levying to eleven. So, again, it's something to think about, uh, obviously, the administration is recommending a full levy, uh, given what we have in front of us for um, employee benefits, staff, uh, instructional. And used to, again, we'll give in that in our presentation too, so. So, that's a, a big thing coming up next month, so May fifteenth will be a community conversation, May twentieth of the next board meeting, full presentation and all of. Yeah.
Just to be clear. Three hundred twenty five dollar increase. Has a hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Right. Hundred percent. Last year, last year, three year rolling average went up approximately thirty seven, I believe. Cause uh, low year falls off, and a big year falls. So, yeah, and then year over year last year, total new dollars in the district. Um, we are anticipating new dollars on the revenue limit of approximately six hundred thousand dollars.
Six hundred thousand dollars.
Of new revenue that the opportunity is there, and that includes the three twenty five and the increase three year roll.
Tax bears was around six hundred thousand dollars.
Um, yes, in general. In basically, yes, yep. Okay, some of that is a combination, if this three twenty five times your, our, our number of students is gonna be, say it's nine hundred, so it's not quite the six hundred. Some of that will be offset, but the entire three twenty five times using the number of nine hundred, that part goes to pocket. And then the other, it'll be probably sixty four to split, sixty on this. We'll find those out in October.
Yeah, sure.
Our student achievement. Student achievement, um, yeah, we had that right before, uh, we took a look at, again, we'll take a look at it, there's answering questions that we have, Maria presented, um, our uh. Five K through fifth grade E L A proposed curriculum, uh, and student achievement committee in the board has been really up to date with Act twenty, which is driving a lot of that. Uh, you will see that the resource that is being recommended is my view, the twenty twenty five version. Uh, again, the full report is right there, um, we opened it up for community and parents' questions and things like that. Uh, again, a big thank you to Maria, but also our entire E L A team, uh, we had uh, our literacy specialists, we had classroom teachers that were spending time on this. Uh, a really, really big project ultimately eliminated what you see there too as well, so. Um, we will be looking for a first review, uh, like we always do, we run it through committee, get it to first review. And then in May, we'll be looking for a final approval, so. We'll talk about that, uh, number one, if you check that, anybody asking questions. Okay, um, next thing we talked about was the library home. So the district technology and library plan, uh, which is required by the D P I, uh, was created, again, this was something that. Um, we've known about probably since September, but given capacities and multiple roles, um, we began tackling that in December, January, ultimately have a recommendation in front of the student achievement committee. Uh, and again, anybody got any questions about that, we certainly can entertain that, it will be going to the board for the approval in May as well. So. Uh, many of the components, actually, the D P I highlighted what has to be in there, so it's uh, you know, once I say it's extended beyond board, but like, when you start talking about collaboration and digital and all that other stuff, those components are there. Any questions, you know, recommend you talk to Maria. She can be the expert in that too, thank you Jim, above all, so, for that too. And then finally, she can be the reason on some of your head data, uh, again, that's it, all represented in the board packet to have as well, get a conversation about that. So, uh, anyway, you can review that online, once that video is posted. So in regards to the E L A given by the E L A, Maria, that was posted for an entire week for folks to review that curriculum?
Yeah, and left it open through this morning.
This morning. Alright. Had a chance to take a look at it, so, okay, a lot of, a lot of work put into that, so, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, and finally, strategic planning, as Nicole highlighted, are we almost done with that? Yes, we are, so, um, ultimately, uh, what has uh, been created, again, we've had many members of fourteen of us, fourteen fifteen. Uh, very screwed, thank you very, very much for all the time and energy that went into that. Um, again, we have narrowed it down to three main pillars, uh, which are the around the student experience, the staff experience, and the community experience. So, uh, again, you will see more of that at the May meeting, because we'll have one more meeting to kind of flush things out, uh, and see what that looks like, so you get a little bit of preview. And then ultimately, the uh, final will be happening on May twenty first after our board meeting, and then the goal is to have a, a draft to the full board in June for review and then for approval in July. That's the goal, so.
Thank you everyone for all the work on it, it is a big task.
It's a big task, it certainly is, so thank you. With that, all we have. Okay, and then before we move on to new business. Okay, we're on to uh, new business, which is one of the first one up, is the first draft review of the proposed K two five English language arts curriculum. There's no comments, that's uh, so then we can talk about it, and again, in the future, before the next board meeting, please make sure that you communicate with Maria, because any questions that. So we don't have uh, proposals yet for cost. Not finalized, yeah, correct?
No, I'm working with the vendor, since it's the twenty twenty five edition, we're reading on professional development costs and some of their new costs for booking. Um, it's first coming available July first, so she's hoping to get that to me shortly, so I'll be ready for me.
So if that, we can get that to. And there's, there are two things presented on that file that I saw.
Yeah, I roughly, um, uh, look for different options. Yeah, I roughly um uh look for different options than what makes sense fiscally for the district between the years. So, um it was actually cheaper to go, even if you don't use it, it was cheaper for us to go six years than five years with the six eight review last year. So, sometimes they just have that, so if you don't use your fifth year, I mean sixth year, but you're paying less money. And it came with like three hundred extra books for our bookroom. So, whatever kind of thing they can swing us is what I'll be recommending.
Okay, any discussion?
Great, great job presenting it earlier, several slides available to everyone and. Talked it through really well, so if anybody's interested in watching the video portion of it.
Okay, so we're looking for approval of that.
All right, uh on to the first draft of those five hundred series policies. Uh again, thank you very much to Nicole and uh Angela Raymond, former board members, putting that together. Um does anybody have any uh questions or comments about uh the policies that were presented? If not now, please make sure you reach out to either myself or a community member if there's any questions, I'll be Nicole at this time, or um who's on policy now, Detroit? Any questions on the five hundred series policies for discussion? Okay, uh moving on to C, enrollment capacity updates. Sure, so just wanted to bring back, you know, it's, again, if you talk about budget, which is enrollment numbers, uh a month ago. We talked a little bit about the the facility opportunities through the facility committee and things like that. Um and again, just wanted to showcase the board, um where we are at right now as of April twenty-second. And these are all the new registrations that we have, whether it be five K or four K registrations, this does not include any. Um open enrollment numbers in there too as well, so. Um in our open enrollment, by the way, we'll go closes, the student council closes tomorrow as well. And uh again, I'll be updating the board with where we're at and things like that, right now, we're at approximately twenty-three in and approximately twenty-two out. Uh and when we think about where does that, you know, how does that compare to a year ago? We were at uh twenty-nine in and thirty-three out, so. You know, we're in the ballpark there, but uh and within a certain day, one of the big things I want to uh highlight with the open enrollment. That may impact that we see, you know, personally, as people walk in, want to enroll through alternate open enrollment. Is that we have limited space, we have no space in five K fourth and fifth grade. As well as very limited space in first grade going in there, so when families see that, uh they're like, oh, if I'm a fourth grader, I can get it. So that may deter them from not if they have multiple siblings. And we've had to turn back probably about fifteen, I would say fifteen students, families who uh, you know, are currently building in the district, and they want to start. Uh we're unable to accommodate that until they actually move into the district. Um so again, there's some things, unfortunately, but again, we're driven by enrollment, and the open enrollment numbers is that a limit, which we have to. Uh so again, we'll, we'll see where it in plan, I will have a full report to the board in May. Because in May for open enrollment, uh the board has to approve and deny, approve or deny all the applications. So, um but from an enrollment standpoint, you know, we feel very confident where we are at with our uh, with our seat section. What we've talked about when we set our open enrollment numbers. Uh and I just wanted to make sure that the community knew that it was on our mind, and uh that it's something that we can continue to to bring up and move forward. Uh I would like to have, as we get into the fall, again, we have another data point on our third Friday count in September. To bring that to the board for another larger conversation about uh our building capacities, our continued enrollment trends. And to see what might be in the future for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, because October is when you really wanna start to play. For that too as well, so. Um uh I have, and I just wanted to throw it to the board too as well, there are in uh companies that do enrollment projections. Two in particular, you have Indy movers, as well as the population study out of W W S, so. Um they've done a lot of things, like local school districts, um ranging from twenty thousand dollars to solve six to seven thousand dollars proposals, so. And something for the board to consider, if that's something that as we continue to grow, continues to be a question mark. On what is we wanna do in the future, so. Stand, leave it up with that, just to make sure that it's on our mind, and if anybody has any questions about that, uh you know, bring it back.
So, look at the spreadsheet. So eight hundred ninety-four student count represents what?
Represents, how many student represents students who we rolled forward from this year, rolled them forward to next year. If we know they're not coming back, we hold them out. Uh say they were, they notified us, and we don't know a lot of people who are moving and not yet, they don't tell us yet. But that represents current enrollment, plus the enrollment that we have for four K and new five K numbers. So our current butts and seats, my answer, our current eighth graders, we shut everything down.
So that's seventy-two for K four is what we think's coming in next year.
That is what we have right now, currently. As of right now.
So as of right now, I know the change, we're down seven students over this year.
Correct, and now I will tell you that my anticipation is we're gonna be over eighty. Um history shows us that parents start to register their kids a little bit later, they move in, things like that too, so. Um just for reference, Justin, since you brought up, right now, our current butts and seats is right around nine six. Right around there, um so we're a little bit short of that, without any move-ins, but again, we're gonna get some movement, we're gonna listen to move out too as well.
But our, our fifth through eighth grade for next year. Are still larger class sizes than our K through K four through first year. Larger classes, still now some other classes.
I mean, as we. We, we all know that.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's statistically, you would see that, yes, we have smaller coming in, bigger going. We have one flip at the primary school, uh at that one oh nine. Uh second, second next year. I would anticipate us being, to be honest with you, right around that nine ten, nine fifteen mark with the new movements. And we got open enrollment numbers that are, you know, set to to bump that up approximately two. And then open enrollment applications are similar to what we're used to seeing. Um you know, I'm gonna do a little bit of analysis on that, again, last year, we got. Twenty-nine in and thirty-three out, and four, for instance, fourteen. Students who attended a year ago enrolled out, yep, so fourteen there. This year, we're at twenty-three in, we have one data.
Yep.
Change, twenty-three in and twenty-two out, only one current student. So one current student has applied out, who's currently in our, yeah, so these twenty-two students who have applied out. Those all count, where's your revenue limit? We don't, they must have moved in. And stay at their same school, or again, did something, we don't know what that means, but they both gonna enroll out, which means that will count towards our people. And conversely, we have twenty-three in, some of those students have applied, but first, we have one student who applied for the grad. Okay, right now, we're not any students, whether the board accepts them or not, we'll take them at that, it's not. So we're in on the enrollment.
I will uh turn it over to working, I am for R D, continue the discussion about how the district can build trust with all stakeholders.
The last month, we had a preliminary conversation about it, what we can do, I was thinking about. This last year and how things have been, and one of the things that I think we've done particularly well is. Working on high quality decision-making by really talking about what are the factors that are important to our decisions? And listening from each board member, have we covered all the factors here, and then thinking about what is the factors that is most important to you? So I hope that's something supportive to do, as I think that is something to increase trust with the community. The, we, we talked about it, our communication, we talked about some things, but we didn't really act on it. It's on the border since last time, we've had any other thoughts about other things we can be doing to increase trust with the community and our community knowledge? And it's our new conversation that we should have.
Yeah, I mean, as a new member, right, um I appreciate what actually brought up, and I think this is a great opportunity for us as a board to. What, what happened in the past behind us, um on the time. Very hopeful we can put that behind us, I'm glad that all members of the board have actually served on committees. Uh moving forward, which I think is a wonderful, a wonderful thing, um. You know, I think we can all learn to respect each other's opinions and disagree at the same time, but I think it's a very.
And this is my concern, right, it's the what we do when we disagree. So for instance, we did our board review, one of the examples we used was a kind of demon, I did not agree. Actually, I didn't disagree with you, I thought what you're saying is true, one, the other was really about taxes, right? That I agreed that that was a lot of taxes for the community, but I love that it, the factor I was holding as higher than that was that it was important that we have the money. To be competitive with our teachers, and what I liked about that meeting is we talked through those factors. So we weren't guessing at what the other person might be trying to say, and so it wasn't necessarily about which, it was about understanding. Understanding where we disagree, and in fact, in this case, we did not disagree on the facts. We had a conversation about which factor we should place as the most important, and I thought that was a. Well, I thought it was a discussion that went through, but it was one of our discussions as a part of the group. That we liked how we wanted to get in the parents, so that was something we tried to help out, yes.
We have a discussion around that topic. So you don't have any concerns about us working together as a, as a group?
We could start a family. I do know it's from how we can help to build trust with our, with ourselves. Because we know that we're never going to be right there, I'm not happy with that from there, so. Trying to think of what it is that we need to, at least be very aware that we have, this is a problem for us. And so we, we talked a lot about our retention, and we want to be, I'd love for us to be a top school to work for, I'd love us to be a school everybody wants to come to. But we need to help with that, and so if we cannot figure out how to increase those numbers, I think we will have increasing and continuing difficulty in our retention. I would like us to be purposeful and aware, and as we see these problems arising, have the conversations about what we would do. So that we don't go down that, I don't think we want to go down, I think it would be very hard for Martin to recover. If we continue a serious retention.
I think, um I also appreciate everything Ashley said, always a good reminder, and um. Appreciate you keeping it on the agenda, I, I think that actions are going to speak louder than words. And it is more than take time, we were at thirty percent, we're at fifty percent, to me, that is an acceptable turnaround. And to work towards keeping that trend moving forward, so that we don't go backwards. Um but again, I think we'll just need to continue to work together and respectful and professional. To make Martin all those things that we all want.
You talked about communication plans last time with the committee, but we never paint your plan. Is that something we should paint wrong? But committee can, not really, maybe space, say, it's not a policy, it's something.
So I think that's gonna be something that's gonna become one of our community experience for our strategic planning, and I think that's something that uh. Once that kind of gets formed, obviously, they're gonna have the big ideas, and then ultimately, it's up to the administration, and if it's about. The school board or whatever, it, that could pull people to really make some action steps and then produce something, so. I think that would be something very positive for us to do after strategic planning is done, when we start talking about that nearly starting from.
Yeah, I had the chance to meet with the administrative team today and sit down with all them individually, and have some one-on-one discussions, just to get an understanding, um. Kind of where they were at, what their needs are, and everything like that, so I think um that helped me very much. I think the more we can do of that is gonna be helpful, um the ones that. Make the difference, right, I talked a little about that, I don't think the board should be the center of anything, right? We should be the ones just on the outside, right, and uh making sure that there's that piece of. Things are getting done, where the proper direction, um but I do, I do think, um I think some. Maybe just mentioning just uh. Uh sometimes the environment can be difficult, right? And um I'll speak to, you know, uh they after got elected, there were social media posts about. Things about me as an individual, that whatever it is, it is what it is, and uh I just think as a group, we need to make sure that. Um we don't encroach on each other's personal lives, right? The personal lives are our personal lives, and how we handle that is is uh up to us as a board, we need to do our jobs. That's, that's my view, right, I think we all do that together, I think, usually, really positively, I have full confidence in our administrative team. Um if you want to help the plans, I'll make it even better, and I talked to uh Mr. Beny Day about how we use technology to leverage communication with. Our community, our families, our parents, and um I think our direction, it will be very, very helpful. Um for the administrative team to help kind of guide where we need to go, some of those things, and uh.
Like our direction, being for us, George?
Yep, yep, just kind of, you know.
Well, I think that everything, the strategic plan is, we've been talking about some pieces, that it sounds like that the administration would be injected some help. Fulfill those, part of the conversations if they might.
Correct, yeah, so we, we would create though that action, finding to say, hey, we're gonna do this, this and this, and then communication, for instance. And if the board's just like, no, we wanna, we wanna part of that too, okay, what does that look like? But the president, you know, the, the rotate of, you know, this time, the president, the vice chairman this year. That's something that the board really decided what, how they wanna begin to communicate, the strategic plan will help, I'd say that.
And I won't pretend I'm on strategic planning, meetings are really not relevant, we just everything, but uh the last plan, right, there's a lot of. Stuff in there as well, we maybe didn't completely finish the last strategic plan, actually, or ideas that may have been, may have been handy.
Most of it, yeah, we did a lot of, we did a lot, not everything was achieved, but ultimately, I think everything was discussed there, and then whether. Light traffic away, or.
Sure.
Et cetera, like that, 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 oh, yeah, we just came up, yeah, but now it's, you know, a new plan, and ultimately, it's up to, up to us. Us, being the board and the administrative team, reach those.
So, so it's going back to how we can build trust with all, with all stakeholders, um. Turnover, why is wrong, were we trending versus?
Yep, so it's, it's very goal of obviously mine and our administrative team. Uh again, obviously, it's, it's early, but again, early indications, but we're gonna, we're gonna be positive. Because, I mean, it's because of the work of the, of the district, of the board, um you know, we're about to approve a very nice salary increase. For, for individuals, um the paid time on, that the policy paid, that looked to be full, because she spent a lot of time on that. Um so that stuff goes along with this, that really doesn't listen, and very soon, we're gonna have another policy campaign, where we're gonna invite our staff to say. Employee handbook, so how do you keep them engaged? And knowing that not everybody's gonna take anyone, but how do they make them feel heard and probably give opportunities for laws? So, um I think we've done a lot of great things, and uh hopefully we'll continue, and here, one lesson, the retention is one answer. Get that in check, because it's not getting any better, the state was not so.
Uh is this something we wanna keep?
I think it's a good idea to continue to discuss.
Uh do you wanna maybe be more focused on, you mentioned some action that we need to review?
I think I, I would recommend that we bring it back up to the board again, once we have strategic planning up there, so that we have some actionable things to do, again. So I would give maybe a pockets to be, by the next time to be. Board meeting, we would be including the plan until two more quarterly, and so we. In, in the case that we need to discuss something soon, we should discuss something soon, but as a plan, I, I would think that after the strategic plan is approved. That's the other time to, we didn't have this discussion.
And then as far as the measurement, is there a plan for another survey?
Yeah, so we'll be kicking out again in the fall, yep, so again, that's at least my, my vision, my goal is, we've done, we now have two years of data for the most part. And then uh do it again in, in October, that for physical perceptions and keep going forward.
And the timing of that survey, you think is a good.
You know, uh according to the school perception, again, that's what they do, they say, hey, get people settled, and then give them an opportunity to kind of. Hey, this is why they're, if they're new, they get sense about what, you know, what the district's about, I think our timing a year ago was right before, in the middle of October. So.
And then we got a report to set.
Any discussion around that topic moving forward? Okay, moving on to E, approving the twenty twenty four, twenty five CISA one contract for general services.
So every year we, uh, bring CISA one services, again, basic memberships, that key stuff, again, CISA does support. So a lot of different things. The biggest item there is CISA's Parents United Consortium. Again, that is a, uh, a special education focused. Uh, group that, that the entire CISA is, again, there are multiple opportunities that are pushed out, uh, through communications and things like that. So, uh, they have seven hundred eighty-one dollars per year, uh, just looking for a motion to approve the twenty four, twenty five CISA one contract.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Does the number change? Uh, it says projected seats, does it?
That's pretty much what it is. Do they go along with my enrollment? Again, there's a slot about who's having to choose.
Do they give us any information on the Parents United Consortium? How many people might participate in that?
They do try. They do, uh, they do keep some of that down. I usually get that at the end of the year and share that.
Yeah, that'd be great if we could get that and that's. Kind of looks in the fly, fly, every, every week, but I don't know. Okay, any other discussion? All right, uh, we have motion in a second. So all those in favor of approving the twenty twenty four, twenty five CISA one contract for general services? Say aye. Aye, that was opposed. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to F, approving the twenty twenty four, twenty five master degree with Arrowhead. United Teachers Organization.
So this is again, the second time that we've, uh, we've talked about this back in March. Um, so again, the proposal that we're looking upon, and we do have a signed, uh, agreement from the union leadership as well. So again, and then to approve or approval, um, get that signed and everything gets taken care of there. So the offer that was accepted by the union was a three percent total increase to all wages. Uh, all the individuals that go together, multiply by three percent, divide it out by the number of staff members that we have. It was sixty-three point two or something like that to get eighteen hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, that means for every one final teacher, they got an eighteen hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cent raise. Added to their base of their contract. Everything went under the base this year because it was below CPI. Um, you will also see a supplemental, um, statement down there that the district planned students would agree to find by the negotiations. And we talked about board of all session while preparing a thousand dollar retention bonus for our teaching staff. Just like close a year ago, per FTE, if they're working with the district this September fifteenth. So again, they have to be working with the district in the twenty three, twenty four school year. And then if they are still with us on December fifteenth, a thousand dollar bonus is added to their December twentieth check. That was the, uh, agreed on offer. So just looking for, uh, a motion to approve the twenty, twenty twenty four, twenty five master agreement. Between the American Community School District and the Arrowhead Unified Teachers Organization as presented.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion around the agreement with the Arrowhead United Teachers Organization? Anything you want to add?
Well, the, you know, I think we have to make, clearly the only thing we could have changed was, um, basically.
The bonus. The last separate from.
It's in the agreement. It is in the master agreement. Yep, it's also noted. It's a footnote in there. If it doesn't go on the contract, in many ways, it's just a supplemental compensation.
What's our anticipated cost?
Um, well, retention of everybody's back, we would have approximately, again, as we know, some people already have. Uh, said they're not, probably around fifty-two thousand dollars out of the sixty-three thousand that's allocated, hopefully fifty-two to fifty-three thousand. Okay, all built in budget.
Thanks, um, and then the last two years was the total increase in?
Sure, so the, the total increase to teacher salaries, it would be four point six-six percent. A year ago, not off the top of my head, but like six point nine plus the seven, if you believe that was bringing a dollar. I mean, that also.
We're already at ten in the last two budget years.
Well, I don't know if you just add it together. It's, it's. Well, if you add seven percent to something, and then you take four percent on to that, so you're probably looking at about eight and a half to like. And like the whole discount. So yeah, seven percent to something, and then you take four percent under that seven.
All right, uh, all right, so it's, uh, all those in, uh, favor of approving the twenty twenty four, twenty five master degree. With Arrowhead United Teachers Organization. Let's figure, say aye. All right, moving on to, uh, G, advantage greater of previous administrative salaries for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
So at discussing close session, the board, um, on March eighteenth, uh, and the board is recommending. The amount of various, and just looking for a motion to approve the administrative salary, probably explain what it is. It's a three percent increase, three percent on to salaries, um, and then also a thousand dollar retention there too as well. Uh, the one individual, uh, Maria Karchowski, again, was bumped up a little bit more than the three percent. Uh, that'd be based off of merit, child duties. It'll be another busy year. Little adjustment.
All right, a screen of motion and a second. We have any discussion?
Yeah, clarifications with all the administrative. That are present here to project for five individuals, uh, salaries, salary, not contracts. Salaries, salaries, this is salaries. I'm frankly already. What I'm saying is. Oh, correct, yes, you're blocking them all together. So there's no verification, but I don't see what you're seeing.
And this was all discussed in close session on March eighteenth, correct? So I'm going to, uh, stay in the voting on that because I was not involved in that, that close session, so. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the twenty twenty four, twenty five administrative salaries? Say aye. All right, uh, moving on to H, purchase of new primary school cafeteria tables.
All right, so, uh, last year we bought five, again, they were, I do believe probably original from nineteen ninety-five to two thousand. So, uh, again, there's fifteen total in there. Last year we bought five and was looking for, uh, to purchase the same five tables we used to have. Uh, just to replace five old tables in the primary school cafeteria. Uh, you'll see all the bids that were collected, uh, Marshall Stationery was below bid, uh, they were our. Contractor of choice two year ago, two as well. So, um, these dollars would come from fund fifty, from our food service balance. And, uh, it would budge you for as we were, uh, to, oh, a year or two. So, uh, a year from now, I'll be back asking for another five to complete the entire set. Um, after we pull it up. So, uh, the administration is recommending the board makes motion to improve Marshall Book and Stationery proposal. To purchase five new cafeteria tables as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the new primary school cafeteria tables. Any discussion?
Do we need to? Specify the dollar amount in the motion or we?
That's as presented, as presented. Yeah, yeah, well, I don't, and actually the next thing about Marshall Stationery, they keep them in their warehouse until we want them, so. This is our purpose, very appreciate.
We plan to have those and sell them this summer.
Yeah, yeah, we can sell them on ours. We were all guys.
And the cost of these tables, these five versions, the last five?
Um, it's probably about, I do believe it was twelve-six, so right around, in five thousand dollars. Eight hundred, two thousand bucks.
These last tall one?
Uh, hopefully another twenty, but one year, we'll play another twenty.
Yeah, very good. All right, so the motion is a second. Not any other discussion? All right, uh, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the primary school cafeteria table, say aye. All right, uh, last I have a new business. Policy approval and both policy deletions, everyone's favorite activity, just anybody here. All right, so four hundred series policy that were first presented at the March seventh, twenty twenty four board meeting.
Looking for a motion, we have to go through all seven meetings, um, as presented.
Here we go.
Right, so.
To delete policies four thousand one and four thousand one point three and replace with policy. Four fifty-three student rights and responsibilities that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Okay, with the motion in a second, any discussion? Or four thirty-three? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three R, emergency nursing services rule that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Uh, any discussion? All right, um, all those in favor of approving rule four fifty-three, say aye. Say aye. Aye, uh, motion carries, all right.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point one, use of automated, use of external defibrillators. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, motion in a second, any discussion? Yeah, all those in favor of approving four fifty-three point one, use of automated external defibrillators, say aye. Carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point one R, use of automated external defibrillators rule. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion and a second for four fifty-three point two, student immunizations, all those in favor of discussion?
Four fifty-three point one R.
Oh, sorry, four fifty-three point one R. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of four fifty-one point one R?
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point two, student immunizations. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving four fifty-three point two, student immunizations, say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point three, infections slash communicable diseases that have been. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion in a second, um, any discussion around four fifty-three point three? Okay, all in favor of approving four fifty-three point three, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point three R, infections slash communicable diseases rule. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion in a second for four fifty-three point three R, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving four fifty-three point three R, say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy four thousand one point four and replace with policy four fifty-three point four. Administering medications to students that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, motion in a second to delete policy four thousand one point four. And remember, update to four fifty-three point one. Four three point four, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor of deleting four thousand one point four and in four three point four, say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point four R, administering medications to students. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, motion in a second to, uh, approve four fifty-three point four R, in discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Motion carries, aye, sorry, motion carries.
Motion to delete policy four thousand one point one, health examinations. Projecting is no longer needed as a health exam, it's no longer required for five K.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to delete policy four thousand one point. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy four thousand one point one, say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point five concussion management. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, we have a motion and second for policy four fifty-three point five concussion management. Any discussion? All those in favor of three point five, say aye. Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-three point six, face coverings of health and safety measure. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on policy four fifty-three point six, face coverings as a health and safety measure, any discussion? I would just like to get interpretation on this one from the policy committee. So this is essentially giving the board the power to mandate face covering?
Correct, regardless, it only, an administration administrator cannot do it. They have to run through the board. And then it outlines if the board does say face coverings are required, then there's rules associated with.
Regardless of whatever recommendations are out there. We see the health officials, the board to mandate.
Correct, now, if the federal or the state government step in, it's a county order, then ultimately.
Or that, that.
That has to go through, the board cannot stop that from having the administration inquire to.
Was this, sorry, I remember. Was this part of a WOSB recommendation?
This is a WOSB recommendation. Yeah, well, we talked about it and said, because WOSB recommended there in sample policy administration. Can do it in the sense of emergency. Uh, we talked about that greatly and said, that's probably nothing that I didn't even recommend it. Uh, because ultimately we'd like the board to, uh, that.
But there's nothing in here saying why the board made.
No, no, correct.
Why the board made, uh, required. Policies is important for our place.
Whatever they want, correct, correct.
I would, I'd rather have some of this.
We've got a motion in a second.
If we, if you wanted to go back to the board, just, or the committee, I'm sorry, just for more clarification, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Around why they would.
I think to just unilaterally allow, uh, board to decide that.
Clarify.
Why would the board decide to do that? Cause I don't see that in here.
No, it doesn't give the board, you know, they will contact local healthcare officials if, you know, CDC recommendations, it doesn't say.
Doesn't really be conditional whatsoever.
No, correct, if three people wanted to mandate face coverings, they could, or in this policy, correct.
So, yes, I would like this, uh, so we have to vote on this.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so, uh, smile up here. All right, all those in favor of, uh, four fifty-three point six, face coverings and health and safety measure? Say aye.
Hi.
All those opposed, say hi.
Hi.
Okay.
So it does, so we'll bring it back to committee, and bring it back to lead for rework, and then we'll bring it first reading again. And then uh we'll do that in May, and then bring June, that way too, so. I've had it that, I'll take a look at some other policies from other school districts, and dig into that a little bit to say. Give you some examples of what other school districts may be governing about giving advice to board students, so. Because we already know about it, maybe this is set to sponsor, so it won't take it back to policy committee. The call had to, we raised your motion, and we had a second. And the motion that had been made, you take back the policy, so right now, it's been voted on, it's probably.
So the policy committee has to bring it back to the board, totally true, or is it?
We'll, we'll do a future, we'll talk about it in future meetings in the agenda. Yeah, eventually. So we can, we can talk.
Alright.
Okay, policy committee can.
Yeah, they can.
Bring that up, or do the work committee accept the policy committee?
So, item twelve is done on the morning of thirteen.
Yep.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-four, reporting child abuse slash neglect that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Same. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve policy four fifty-four, reporting child abuse and neglect, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving four fifty-four, reporting child abuse and neglect, say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-four R, reporting child abuse and neglect rule. That has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Same. Alright, we have a motion in the section, second to approve four fifty-four rule, reporting child abuse neglect rule, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving four fifty-four rule, uh say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve policy four fifty-seven, suicide prevention slash intervention that has been recommended by the policy committee. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Right. Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve policy four fifty-seven, suicide prevention slash intervention, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of bringing four fifty-seven, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy six zero four one and replace with policy four five eight, school wellness, student assistant program. Student assistance program that has been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Right, alright, we have a motion and a second to approve policy four fifty-eight, school wellness, student assistance program. And uh delete policy six thousand forty-one, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of policy four fifty-eight and deleting policy six thousand forty-one, say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy six thousand four point two and replacement policy four thirty-three. Student placement that's been recommended by the policy committee and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion and a second to approve policy four thirty-three student placement and delete policy six thousand four point two. Any discussion? Four thirty-three, alright, so now we're going to approve four thirty-three, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. At least.
Four hundred, I think it's four hundred.
We go up to what, twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand, right around there.
The goal, we get. Alright, very good, um alright, so that completes uh new business. And we are moving on to new future looking agenda items. So again, May twentieth, uh we got, and obviously a lot of things that are presented there as well. Um. I'd like to uh put out that in um discussion about collection and creating consent agenda. And just to. Clarify, right, uh a discussion on community as a whole, we go to the policy committee first. Because we have probably a policy for it potentially occurring.
You got, yeah, our consent agenda is not a policy driven, that is a board directed, okay, to give, or to the district administrator prepare. The agenda and this all brings some information out of that.
Can we get information out of ten of those?
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Um and then.
Before we go there, okay, did you want the policy committee, are you asking the policy committee to pursue consent uh committees as a whole, or for information, or?
I don't know how that works with committees, when you seem to be formalized with the agenda.
No, so any board member can ask for, and ask for that to be. And then value to be put onto a policy, can the policy committee take a look at a policy that looks like that's.
Yes, so yes, I would like the policy committee to discuss the information around and discuss uh committees in the whole.
Okay.
Uh and potentially bringing that to.
Uh the one hundred, one hundred, yeah, one hundred, yeah, and replace.
It's currently.
Twenty-one. Yeah, so a committee is a whole, so I understand that, it's basically, um there will be a whole herself committee, so. There will be a set date, once per month, where the territory will come together. And listen to the, or decide on policy recommendations for student achievement, the finance, so it will be one. Entity on one day a month that we will administer those to meet. The only one that can be standard that have recommendations and negotiations, many still have a recommend, that's they'll say two. Create the. Since we're. Yes, so that's action. Yes, so. Policy. Discuss it. You got it, yeah. I agree, so we can just worry. Exactly, right? Uh um the other conditions, make sure. For today, I'm just jumping to the other person, it hasn't been. So we need to say, the internship we created in our account on twelve July, um in June. It is required by board policy that that the board does vote. Or goes into close session, or to be here, evaluation of the district administrator, so. Um Maria, are you planning anything student achievement wise?
I, I don't, next summer.
Nothing due, okay, so um once we do set an meeting date, again, that can either be after the meeting, or before the meeting, just to kind of think about. After we place the uh the date on meetings.
And June twenty-fourth doesn't work, or will we change it kind of summer?
No, I just wanted to make sure we have a new board, uh June twenty-fourth works great.
So full disclosure, Monday is your baseball softball night at my household, so June twenty-fourth not work, like make the seventeenth work, really? Something that.
I can.
Monday, Tuesdays usually work best for me.
Keeping it on our faces. Likely. I'd like to scale. And. So I can do something.
See, um. You know, like on Tuesdays. Trying to get a pound, you could work. Um. Seventy-five a month, seventy-five a month. So I don't see that. You know, I've been much on the doing, and we, now this needs to build up. It seems like that final approval of employee handbook, you got first to do student, student handbooks, it seems that. Strategic planning preview.
Oh, actually, doesn't work, doesn't work by. The seventh.
Working better than the. Yes, working in the seventeen works just fine, without any.
Detroit, Detroit, seventeen can't be there.
The call was a twenty-fourth, we're pretty, the seventeen times start.
I can do the seventeen.
And twenty-fifth was not work. Is there another day that we do that better than Mondays, if we had to go to an alternate date in the future, or is Monday's kind of the third?
My preferences would be in, it's just, it's a nice.
Okay. Very hard to hold, you're remote, remote.
Seventeen, yeah. June seventeen.
Do you want to go until July right away?
Uh before we go, do you want to go at six o'clock? On the seventeenth, six o'clock, and then, did you want to do the close session before, at five, or after? He's asking for.
Does never need that day, but.
Obviously, after. The crunch of time, because. Um there'd have to be a concession of the board on. And now we want to do it, because.
Okay, we'll go afterwards, so if everybody can just plan on the close session afterwards, and. Okay. On his top of July, if we can, that'd be great.
So the initial date we would look at would be the twenty-ninth.
Right. I am planning on being out of town then, hey, I can request the twenty-second. That's how early other people.
Oh, yeah.
Well, in fact, it will work.
Alright, we're taking very second, yeah, works for me.
I'll just, yeah, we have missed eight, you saw. Alright, so we'll do a second July, twenty-sixth, got it. That one, we'll try to make it like. Alright, then August, we'll just global plan, in June, we'll make sure we don't be time according to. Thank you for June and July, and summer, I'm excited. Motion is very.
Same. Alright, motion and a second, all those in favor, I, I.
Hi.
So we need uh some signatures.